Welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Franklin School Board. This meeting has been properly posted. Ms. Larson, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Community comment period. Participants under this agenda item must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If a comment, if a community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. Would anyone like to make a comment? Anyone like to make a comment? Then a closed community comment. Are there any school board announcements from the members? Okay. Moving on, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on February 24th here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. A regular board meeting on March 10th here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item seven is our district administrator update from Dr. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items tonight. Today, we sent a survey to our families to help us with our planning for the 21-22 school year. Knowing what we know about COVID and vaccinations, we are asking our families to answer two questions. The first question is, if the same virtual program as this year were offered next year with a year-long commitment, how likely would they be to enroll their child in person or in virtual learning? The second question relates to why a family would want to participate in a virtual learning program. And it includes a medical condition of the child, a medical condition of a household member in the family, general concerns about COVID, a preference for virtual learning, and other. Obtaining this feedback is important to our process of engagement and meeting the needs of our families. We will also use this information to determine our next steps. Things to consider once we have the data is the number of students and how we would offer virtual programming. We sought feedback as we developed our program in spring for this school year and used multiple surveys to do so. We will continue to engage our families in the same manner as we work through the planning for next year. We are also in the process of planning for summer school, and we are planning a program to be in-person. On March 10th, the board will see and approve the courses. We will also share at that time how we will conduct summer school while providing the necessary COVID-19 protocols. Parents will receive more information about signing up for summer school in March. And finally, next Monday is the Professional Development Day. Our focus will be on the goals of our school action plan. Tonight, you'll hear from two schools about their action plans, but also we're continuing our important equity work. And one of the things that will be happening Monday is a number of our support staff personnel will engage of one of the two mandatory 90-minute training sessions. And if they're not attending Monday, there'll be other opportunities through the month of March. Our focus is on our data and the equity research, similar to what the board participated in in their workshop. That's what I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, reports, presentations, and other school business. First off is our Friends of Franklin presentation, Mr. Sprague and Dr. Miller.
All right, so it's our first Friends of Franklin of the year, but we couldn't do all that we do without the community. So we appreciate, we appreciate those individuals who have helped and everybody in the community. First is Rachel DePiro, dominated by Chad Nelson. Chad wrote, "Rachel demonstrated stewardship and provided Robin Wood with a variety of beautiful masks at the start of the year that she invaded herself. These were given to students who lost or forgot their masks." She also said to let other schools and the district office know, "This was really helpful to ensure our students had the proper PPE to be safe at school." Thank you, Rachel.
Some kinds of those little things that just come from the heart that make a really big difference. He just came in and brought us those masks, and honestly, it was wonderful because we did have kids lose them. We had kids, they would break if we get them in the start of the year, and now they had a variety to choose from, and they were able to go back to the costume, like proud to wear the masks that we gave them after they lost. So really just to appreciate it, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Rachel. Do you want to hold that? We can stand for a minute.
Guys, you've got 14 minutes left. Let's go.
13 and a half minutes left.
Debbie, can you organize your side?
Yeah.
Ducking or what?
They're very uncooperative.
You want us standing in the picture?
Yes.
So if you just...
There you go.
Oh, so we're in the picture.
Yep.
Oh, you mean like this?
Yeah, well, kind of.
Are we too close?
Yeah, I think so.
Smile.
And nominated by Sean LaPlante, Pastor Bill Limer from Victory of the Lamb Church. Pastor Bill has contributed to the mission of Franklin Public Schools by supporting the well-being of our students and staff at Countrydale. His stewardship cannot go unnoticed as he has made himself available to our entire community in many challenging times. Pastor Bill has worked with his team to ensure that our school has the things that we need. Examples of this include monetary donations to support teacher classrooms, home masks for students, and most recently, 30 cases of water for teachers to keep on hand when students forget their water bottles. Thanks for always helping our school.
What I'd like to say is that, you know, principals and other community members have this opportunity to nominate people within Franklin for this award. And when I thought about it, it really took me a matter of seconds to think about who I could nominate. And honestly, Pastor Bill, the work that you have done for our school and our community has just not gone unnoticed, and we're so appreciative. And he reaches out to me, he reaches out to teachers, our students, our families, and it's always like, how can I help? So we're just so, so very lucky to have you, and I'm excited to continue our partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're experts, though. Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Wait, I wasn't smiling.
I know I forgot something. I think I blinked.
What did you call that, smiling with your eyes?
Smiling. Smize.
Exactly. Well done.
Smiling, guys, smiling.
I said there's really no word. Smize. Smize.
Congratulations on the Friends of Franklin Award. That is definitely an honor that you guys help and support our school district and our schools in the way you do. We appreciate it. Item B, Principal Action Plan Updates. Pleasant View Elementary and Southwood Glen Elementary, Dr. Fekler, Ms. Mowbray. Or Dr. Mowbray.
All right, thank you, first of all, for having us here tonight on this beautiful cold night in Wisconsin. It's our pleasure to be able to come to you and share a few things that are going well for us in regard to our action plans this year and to give you an opportunity to see something in action tonight. So we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute. But again, my name is Jamie Fekler. I'm the principal at Pleasant View. I'll let Bridget introduce herself.
And I'm Bridget Mowbray. I'm the principal at Southwood Glen. And we want to start out and just give you just a brief minute overview of kind of things that are going on at our schools, talking about what we're proud of, what we're currently learning, and what our next steps are. At Southwood Glen, there's so much I'm proud of, and I think one thing that stands out above all of it is, is the teams, the teamwork and the team collaboration, particularly in this year, seeing how our teams have pulled together and really supported one another to support the social emotional needs of our students and also the academic needs of our students. And so that's really been a strength, seeing the student growth, kind of looking at the mid-year and seeing that we're on track to meet those end-of-year goals, and it really is the teamwork that's contributed to that success. Something that we're learning, one thing that our team is particularly proud of or passionate about, I should say, is the equity work that we're doing as a district, and that's something that they really enjoy digging into and, and thinking about how we can create a equitable environment for all of our students. Some of that has focused on cultural competence and identity work and supporting the social and emotional needs of our students. We'll continue that work on this coming Monday. So that's some of the learning that's going on in our school. And next steps, one of the things that we're going to be working on as we go forward is looking at some of the success that we've seen in our recent data and talking about as teams, how can we get really specific about those things that are going well, and how can we name those and be sure that we continue doing that and we spread some of those great pieces? So that's some work that we're going to be starting together on Monday and continuing. So I look forward to getting some more specifics about that.
And at Pleasant View, one thing I'm proud of is our work around our student engagement goal, our first goal. We administered a student engagement survey a couple of times this year already, and we've been able to use those results then to determine what focus groups we'd run. So as a school improvement team, we met together, looked at those results and said, well, we need to ask a little bit more about these questions, some high, some of the high questions where students were rating very high and some questions that they might have been rating lower. And so we took that and we determined some other questions to ask students out of grades one, three, and five, just a small group. And we found information from them that, you know, okay, we can dig a little bit further into this topic or that topic, but our school improvement team wasn't satisfied with that. And I'm glad they weren't satisfied with that because we ended up determining that it would be best to bring the data right to the classroom for the kids. And that doesn't necessarily mean sharing the high and the low questions, but it does mean asking them their feedback on, for examples for those higher or low questions. So our teachers have been doing that over the past three weeks, asking their classes that within a community circle, an opportunity to share out one-on-one or within their large group or even use Post-its and share with a partner. And they're going to be bringing that data as a next step for us to our professional learning on Monday. So we're going to take a look at what next steps we can take as a result of finding out from our kids, not just that survey information, but from them specifically in each room, what they need. And I think that's just a tribute to our school improvement team and, and the questions, the hard questions that they're asking so that we can get better. So I'm really proud of their work this year, and I'm excited about our next step there. As a, as a segue here, we're going to talk a little bit about rounding. This is a strategy that we use in each of our buildings, and this is around our third goal, our staff engagement goal. And what I'd like to do is just, I have a handout for you tonight to just share the why, the what, and the how of rounding. So I'm going to pass that out. I want to explain a little bit of that, and then we're going to model a rounding conversation for you so you can see what it looks like in action, because we meet with each of our staff members two to three times a year at least with this type of conversation. So I'll explain more about it after I hand this out. I copied a bunch, so might as well pass them out. So as I said before, rounding is an important strategy for us in that Goal III area because it helps us to recognize staff needs, helps us to really show our care for staff, and then also to hear them. If they have training needs or other, other resources that we can provide them in the classroom to make, to make their classroom experience better so that our kids have the best, we want to be able to do that. It also gives us an opportunity to affirm the work that other people are doing so they can recognize someone that they know is, is making an impact on them, and that is sometimes the most powerful piece of this conversation. So I have the why, the what, and the how listed there, the what are the questions that we ask during that time, and the how really is just explaining that it's an opportunity for us to be listeners, and our staff wants listeners. I think anyone would want that. It's an opportunity to, to really hear, hear their opinions and also clarify the priorities in the work that we're doing every day in our building. So I'm, I'm really excited to actually, to do this rounding conversation with Bridget tonight for you so that you can get a glimpse into what this looks like. So without any further ado, we're going to get started here. So Bridget, before we, I'm going to make sure you can still hear me face you here. So before we get started, Bridget, I just want to ask you, how are things going outside of school? Don't talk about school stuff yet. Let's, personally, how are things going for you?
Oh, thanks for asking. They're going well. I'm kind of unpacking and moving into our house slowly, which has taken longer than we expected, and I have a new puppy that's keeping me very busy, so it's been very good. I would have to say, everything about coming to school has exceeded my expectations, so that's been going really well. I look forward to coming to work, and it feels very safe here, so I'm feeling really good about that, too.
Thank you, Bridget. Is that puppy keeping you up at night, or are you doing okay?
No. Not anymore.
But unpacking could, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So as we, we'll transition into some questions about work, and I want to ask you, first of all, what's working well for you right now?
You know, I thought about this question when you sent it out, and so many things are working well, so I'm just going to name three, three of the big things. So team collaboration for sure. I appreciate the time with my PLC. That really helps me refine my lessons and kind of dig into some of the work a little deeper, so I've really appreciated that. Also, just knowing that my team always has my back, and that comes through in that PLC or in all the work that we do. So that's been really important this year, as it is every year. I also really feel like the protocols are working well. I alluded to that a little bit before, but our, my classroom feels safe. I feel good about our kids being here, and, and they have really exceeded my expectations as far as their mask-wearing and distancing and everything like that, which I wasn't sure what to expect with my second graders. And then I would say that, that the kids, they've been fantastic this year. I'm really appreciating, I think, being in person and, and being together, and like I said, just following all of the protocols and expectations and really eager to learn. So it's been, it's, all of that is going well.
Sounds good. Thanks, Bridget. I'm going to pause for just a second. I'm pausing because I didn't ask you to jot something down. I want you to jot down any notes or noticings as we continue our conversation. There's a couple more questions, but I want you just to, again, if it's one or two things that you've noticed in our conversation, I want you just to jot that down. It'd be right on that rounding sheet that I passed out to you. All right, Bridget, continuing on, do you have what you need to do your job?
You know, I would say I do. Just one thing I would think of, and, and this is probably kind of always the case, but I could use some more books. So...
We write that down.
I just saw Chris. So, you know, I think I'm getting, I'm getting to the point where some of my Level G readers could probably use some more work, some books, and then I'm going into a fiction unit that I think, I'm looking for a couple different titles to, to really engage some of our kids.
So would you be able to get me some of those titles that, that you're interested in?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Maybe we can take a look at that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Bridget. Is there anything I can do to help you continue to perform well?
Well, one thing I really appreciate is the positive Post-its that you give, so just having the work that I'm doing be acknowledged and affirmed has been really, that's been really great, and some, I, I want you to know that that was delivered in a week where I could really hear that message or really needed to hear that message, so thank you, well timed. I appreciate the feedback as well that you give in the observations, and I like that you're tying it to, to my professional practice goal so I can kind of get some really targeted feedback. I'm working on student engagement, so I really appreciate that you've taken time to, to align my feedback to that PPG.
Thank you, Bridget. Thanks. So as you think about the scope of your day, is there anyone who's been especially helpful to you that I could recognize?
Okay, so everyone, really, but, and for sure, my team, which I've already talked about, but I would like to highlight the office staff. They've just really gone above and beyond this year, and so if you could acknowledge them and thank them for their work, always with a smile and always ready to help, so I've really appreciated that.
Is there anything specifically, I know you said they've gone above and beyond, anything specifically for any one of those members that you might highlight that I could tell them? And again, I'll share this with them either face-to-face, or I'll send them an email. It's just a great way to affirm...
You know, I think one, one thing I can think of is, is a head of student who has some medical needs, and they've really taken that seriously and learned the protocols, and I feel very confident with whomever is in the office of those three that they're going to know how to meet his needs well.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, like I said, I'll either face-to-face tell them those things or send them an email. And I know it puts a smile on everyone's face when they get those compliments, because especially in the times that we are right now with pandemic going on and just difficult times, it, it really helps to brighten someone's day. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, so what I'd like you to do right now, that concludes our rounding conversation. I'd like you to, if you could pair up with the person next to you and just share for a minute or two some of the things that you noticed in that conversation. It could be, it could be a positive, it could be something to, to dig a little bit further into, to find out more about. Could be anything that, as you looked at those questions on the sheet, too, that, that jumped out at you. So I'll give you a minute or two just to do that with the person next to you. Conversation, some things that I heard as I was listening kind of across the room here, some people said, it's just a simple conversation, right, that we don't always make time for, and that's important. Also, someone said that positive affirmation is genuine and it's, it's not contrived. It's something that someone has thought about and responded to, and then also it's an opportunity to touch base with all staff. So it's, you hit all those big points, and that's, it's important for us to be able to gather this information. This is data for us. This is qualitative data, and we can make decisions with that data as we look for themes across our building, as we look to meet needs of people in the moment. And it's, it's really been helpful. It's been a great strategy for both of us in both of our buildings. We do this in all the buildings, all five, but it's been, it's been great for me to be able to, to see into a different lens of our staff and help to really help our culture to thrive in each of our buildings. So I'll pass it off to Bridget as we close here.
Yes, just in closing, we wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to share this with you and, and ask if there are any questions that you have of us.
So is this scheduled or is it more drop-in?
It is scheduled, so they're 10 to 15-minute conversations that are scheduled.
How often?
So I try to do five to seven a week. What do you do, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, I shoot for five to seven a week, but if we're looking at quarterly, I've done two rounds right now of all of our staff, about 70 people, twice this year, and I'm, I'm looking to do another two more, two more rounds of rounding.
The, the expectation in the system was for each site to do it once, one, every employee once in first semester, once in second semester. Some of them have done more, but that was the expectation for this school year. Next school year, we'd move to quarterly.
Is this our first year of implementation of rounding, or did we do it before?
We did...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We did some, some last year, so last year we picked a group to do, we didn't do it in the, with the entire staff, so we picked an employee group to round with.
I guess, do you get themes across buildings or grades or...
Yeah, you may get themes across the building. It could be grade levels. It's also important for me, when I look at our staff engagement survey results, it's important to take a look at what's coming out there so that I may probe a little bit deeper in some of those questions. Just like I said earlier, when we ask kids to give examples of questions, we can do the same thing with our staff. And it's an opportunity and a safe way to do that, one-on-one, you're not in front of a big group of people, and, you know, I've, I've been able to find out some information that's been really helpful in regard to our building that I would not have been able to find out had I not asked it in a rounding conversation.
And there's no evaluation going on, it's just checking?
No, no evaluation, no.
It's very effective. We used to use something like this, we called it management by walking around. And it was a little different because you have many more individuals to touch, whereas our supervisors had a dozen to 15. So it's much more time-consuming for one individual to touch that many employees, but like you said, you find out things that you would never know otherwise.
Ultimately, ultimately, it's about building relationships with people. And you know, you notice, and some of you noticed this, I didn't put this on that, on that sheet, but you're building rapport right away when you're asking about outside of work, what, you know, what's, what's going on? And you think it's so simple, you know, like, but we don't do it often enough, and that allows you to make that connection, a deeper connection with someone.
Yep. Totally agree. Anyone else? No? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Next is our audit report from Mr. Millsner.
Yes, tonight we have the 2019-20 Audit Report, and with us is Mr. Brian Mecknik, a partner from Riley, Penner, and Benton, and he will be going over the audit. We also have Michelle Alsheski, our comptroller, who works on the audit very closely.
All right, thanks, Jim. I'm going to first go through the...
All right, thanks, Jim. I'm going to first go through the audit, and then we have a management letter, just kind of touch on that. So the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So it's an unmodified opinion, it's a clean opinion, it's what you're looking for. We had no problems that were encountered during the audit. We had full cooperation with staff. It was kind of a unique year for, for auditing, but everything went really smooth, so we'd like to thank you for that. And then kind of, I'm just going to go through what's all included in the audit report, and then highlight some of the numbers. So we have our independent auditors' report. That's the first two pages of the audit. And then we have the management discussion analysis. That's an analysis that's required in accordance with governmental accounting standards. So you guys put that part of the audit report together. And then we have the basic financial statements. This shows the governmental activities, the governmental funds. And then you also see that there's the private purpose trust that's part of the statement of fiduciary net position changes and net position. And this will be the last year that's scheduled to include it because we adopted GASB 84 this year, which we moved that to the regular fund, Fund 21. And then also the student activity funds were moved to Fund 21 this year. So you'll no longer see that schedule is not included this year as it has been in the past. And that, that caused a, an adjustment to our beginning fund balance of $136,725 to adopt that accounting standard. So then we have the required supplementary information. This shows our budgetary comparisons for the general fund and the special education. And then we have our required disclosures for governmental accounting standards for the WRS, the pension liability, and the OPEB liability. And then we have the other supplementary information. These are requirements that we're required to have this information. Big items are the schedule of expenditure of state awards and federal awards. And then we also have our, our federal uniform guidance audit and our state single audit. And those reports are clean. There were no findings to report on that. So great audit report. Some of the highlights, you had a general fund operating results. You had an increase in the fund balance of $1,431,000. Your general fund, fund balances at the end of the year, $492,000 is restricted, or for, due to prepaid expenses. Then nine, or $6,996 is restricted for the unspent library funds. And then we have unassigned fund balance of $23 million, which is 37% of your fund balance, or your budget expenditures. Then we have our expenditures. Your budget, $62,127,000. Actual expenditures were $58,422,000. So you spent 94% of your budget. And usually you're close to 100%. This is very common this year with COVID. A lot of districts did not have expenses for conferences and so forth, and just not having the students in classrooms. So that's common with a lot of schools this year. So then we have revenues. You budgeted $62 million. Actual was $61,800,000. So you received 99.56% of your budget revenue. So, and that's pretty much consistent with all the other schools that we've audited as well. So then we have our debt activity. You had payments on GEO debt, or bonds of $2,665,000. And your interest expenses were $2,140,000. Then we have the other post-employment benefits. We show the net OPEB liability this year is at $5,937,000, which was down from $6,772,000 the year before. And then we have our supplemental pension liability. The net liability was at $8,498,000, which was up a little from $8,189,000. And then all this information for the OPEB and the supplemental pension comes from the actuary. So it all depends on their calculations. They changed the, in order to be in compliance with GASB 75, they changed the discount rate. It decreased from 3.75% this year to 3.5%. And last year, it went from 3.5% to 3.75% the year before that, so they kind of went back. But that's all based off of GASB and how they adopt, or calculate those. So. And then we have the net pension asset of $991,000. And this is for the Wisconsin retirement system compared to $1,251,000 the year before. So that is also based off of the actuarial report that the, the state has for the Wisconsin retirement system. So. And I said there were no single audit findings. Is there any question on any part of the audit report?
Any questions?
Yes?
So you mentioned that our fund balance is 37% of our expenditures. What's the, the range that you see in your audits across the state?
I like to see at least 25%. If any of them are under 20%, those are the districts that have to do a lot of short-term borrowing. So the higher you are, the less short-term borrowing you're going to have to do. And we did see these numbers increase this year due to COVID because they didn't spend as much as they, they were in the past. So that has increased the fund balances. I'm assuming that those will probably change. Who knows? But going forward, once the schools are operating at full capacity again.
And is this net of fund, the capital fund? Is this, this is not including the capital?
Nope, this is just the, the regular fund. It does not include any of the, the GASB adjustments we make for the pension or the OPEB, or the WRS.
So 37%?
Correct.
And you typically see 25%?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Also, with this, with the state budget and everything happening, there was some discussion about the perception that school districts do, are sitting on all this money because of COVID. So what, what, maybe you're not the person to ask, but what do you think a year from now, what are we going to be hearing? This is really great news, but what do you?
That is such a hard question to answer because, because we don't know what's going on. It changes from day to day. Because the federal government keeps on putting more federal funds that you're receiving to help with education and so forth, especially with the food service program. They've received, that was pretty much one of the major programs we almost tested at every single school because they receive so much in federal funding for the food service program. So it's so hard to tell what's going to happen in the next year. Once, hopefully, everything will be back to normal within a year, but nobody knows.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
I guess one other thing. So generally, there's a lot of OPEB stuff here and stuff.
Correct.
In the actuary and all that. So is, are we okay, or is it going the right direction, or?
The, the OPEB, yes. You kind of watch what your benefits are. Because the OPEB probably has only been around for the last, I would say, probably eight years, eight to 10 years. And when they first started these, the actuarial reports and they saw what their liabilities were, a lot of districts changed the benefits for retirement. And that kind of, really, we started seeing those numbers decrease. And the majority of districts that I worked with, these numbers were a lot higher 10 years ago when they first started. So I think it was, it was actually a good thing that they came up these requirements that you have to disclose this in the audit report. So yeah, you're kind of right in line with, with other districts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right. We also issue a management letter. And this is where we report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And you have the same significant deficiency that you have every year for the preparation of the financial statements. Pretty much the only thing that we're responsible for in the audit report is the independent auditors' report. You're required to do the financial statements, from the fund statements, and then change them over to the governmental activities. So that's a, making adjustments for all the capital assets historically and for the current year, all your debt, and then recording all the OPEB activity, and then footnote disclosures for all that too, and the required supplementary information. So I would say for our 35 districts that we audit, we probably have one or two districts that we do not give that to because their comptroller or business manager used to be an auditor, so they kind of know what they're doing. So not that you don't, you guys do an amazing, you guys do actually an amazing job. So I'm not saying that. But it's part of our standards that we have to look to see if you're able to actually do all the footnote disclosures and everything. So. And then we have another comment about the actuarial that you'll need a full actuarial calculation for this coming year. So I'm assuming you guys have started that already. So. And then if we would have any disagreements with management, or if we did propose audit adjustments, or there were any material ones, if we proposed them, you didn't make them, we would disclose that. Or if there were material ones, we would have them attached to this letter as well. And I'm happy to report, I think there was one journal entry that you gave us. So otherwise, there were no audit adjustments, which is very unusual for, for auditing school districts. So good job. So that's all I had. Any other questions?
Owen?
I just have one more.
Okay.
So, and it relates to a, a note on cash balance, because we have a lot of cash.
Yes.
And something about not having a policy on cash management or something. There's some statement here about to the effect that we don't have a policy on.
On the.
Cash management or?
On the policy of custodial risk?
Yes.
So that's like if you're, you guys have some that's unsecured, uninsured, up to $5 million. So some districts have a policy where they say that anything that's not uninsured, they get a collateral agreement with a bank, and they usually pay money for that. So some districts, I have very few that actually have an actual policy for that. So that's really nothing I would be too concerned about.
How much is uncollateralized?
$5,413,000. Because you did have some pledged securities, or that were fully insured of $13 million that were collateralized by the, so you had excess above what you're, you had there.
And what does that mean when it's uncollateralized?
That means that if something happened to the financial institution that those funds are with, you would be, they're not insured, so you could lose those funds.
So there's, and there's things we could do though, to protect those?
Correct.
But we're not?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is our community education and recreation department aquatics classes discussion.
Mr. Anderson is here this evening to share with you a proposal for how the recreation program can provide our aquatics program in a, in a better way to serve our community. So we thought it would be good for you to hear why we're considering that and obtain your feedback on that. So I will turn that over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Excited to talk to you about a partnership we're working on with Innovative Health and Fitness for our aquatics program. The reasons we looked into this partnership were listed on the papers that you got. Really, the department with aquatics that we run right now, every year is operated at a loss for aquatics. Lack of staff due to COVID, due to pool renovations and fixing the pool. We're not able to give kids a regular schedule, so we lose a lot of staff turnover. The temperature of the pool, during the swim season, that temperature is turned down to about 81 degrees. Still too hot for the swim team and too cold for us for swim lessons. So when we get into the winter session, late fall, parents are not wanting to bring kids to swim lessons to take them out in the cold. The locker rooms, although they're great for high school athletics, they're really not meant for families or for people to take swim lessons or working out in. So children of opposite sex of the parent bringing them there. So if I took my daughter, who was five, and I wanted to change her in the men's locker room, that's a problem. And can't take her in the girls' locker room because that would be a bigger problem. So locker rooms don't typically work real well in Franklin at the high school. Lack of time slots to run lessons. The swim team has become more and more successful. So the practice times have moved later and later. That pushes back our, start of our swim lessons to about 6:30, which again, we start with the real little ones, and that's too late to do that. With Innovative Health and Fitness, they've been open during COVID, offering swim lessons. So they have an existing staff right now. They would like to offer our kids in FIAD that graduate, or get their certificate in lifeguarding, the opportunity to be employed. So they would come during the testing process and hire kids to work for them. The temperature of their pools are 88 and 93 degrees to offer swimming lessons in. The locker rooms that they have, if you've been in there, they're club-style locker rooms. They're the large lockers. They also have family changing rooms where parents or entire families can go on and change to get ready for swim lessons. And also the time slots that they have, they're running year-long. They're going to make that switch with the additional people that they would get from our program. So they would offer lessons like we do during the weeknights and on weekends year-round. The cost of the lessons, we just talked with them today. They're going to be at or below the cost that we would charge coming out to offer lessons again. So it would save not only our department money, but it would save the community money in lessons. It would answer those things that really as a district, we can't answer, nor would we want to. We're not going to have club-style locker rooms. We're not raising the pool temperatures. Staffing would be a huge issue for us if we were going to try and come out in the summer and try and offer swim lessons this year. We've not ran lessons in two years. Our existing staff that we've had in the past are no longer able to work for us. So we'd be starting with new lifeguards. You'd have to train them in the American Red Cross. Lessons, the levels, and all the skills that they would need to be able to teach that. So Innovative makes a lot of sense. We've partnered with them in the past, and the pool's been down. They've offered some lessons for us. So this is something that we're working on and that we're very excited about moving forward with.
We're interested in the board's feedback. Mr. Anderson would like to move forward because we have a rec guide that needs to be published soon that would have this information in it. So I'm just curious what thoughts or input the board might have on this.
If it's a money-losing proposition for us every year, I see no reason why we can't go forward. And I, I'm, I go to Innovative every day, and it's a great facility. Yeah, the pools are great. The, the whole place is a great place.
So you're losing money because of lack of numbers, or?
Numbers are down due to the time slots and the starting of it. Most places that, recreation departments, lose money on aquatics. You just don't have enough deck time. You're in school during the day, so you can't run anything, you know, up until your varsity swim teams are out of the pool area. So yeah, every year, we, we operate at a loss on swim lessons.
Brad, is this just swim lessons, or would this be, I mean, because I don't know how many people use Innovative, but they have exercise class, aquatic exercises, and all sorts of things going on. Would this be other things, or just the swim lessons?
We're starting with swim lessons. We've talked to them about some of the aquatic fit classes that we've offered that have been popular, about sharing the instructor with them. Again, we were only able to operate some of the Aqua Fit classes at 8:00, 8:30. And there's not adults or seniors who are wanting to come out at that time to take these classes because you have to wait till the swim lessons are over with. So you're right, they do offer a lot of that. I talked with Scott Cole, who's the owner, about some of the classes that we've offered that have been popular, and he's very much interested in getting the contact information to be able to do that. But we're starting right now with the, just strictly the swim lesson part of it.
Could they do this without us? I mean, they're an enterprise. They could offer swim lessons. I guess I'm not sure why.
They do offer swim lessons right now out to the community at a premium price. So like you've seen in our guide, we've got our resident, non-resident rate. They've got their innovative health rate and non-innovative health rate. What they're willing to do is to take anybody that would sign up through the rec department, or not sign up through, but they would use the, the guide. There's going to be a code in there, a promo code. They would get the price that an innovative member would get. And then that innovative member and/or anybody signing up through with that rec promo code would get an additional 10% off. So they do offer lessons out that people can sign up for, but it's more money. And I don't think their reach is as far as what the rec department would be mailing this out to every mailing address three times a year.
Also, we're bringing students to them.
So really, this is just like a pass-through. You're just doing some administration work, and that's it?
Right. We, we're not going to take their registrations. Typically, what we're going to do is we're going to tell them about the partnership. And each year in our aquatics section, we're going to list the things that Innovative has with their website. The person would go in to Innovative's website, put in the promo code, and sign up for their classes through Innovative. We're not going to handle money. We're not going to cut checks back and forth.
Okay. So what you're saying then, just to kind of summarize it, we're doing some advertising. It's not going to cost us anything, and it's still going to provide the service of lessons.
Correct.
Are we still going to have the other classes that we, that have been popular in the past? Or are we, well, we have zero classes?
For aquatics?
Like the, the, for senior citizens, or some of the other classes that have been.
You just, you mentioned class, other classes. We're only going to do swim lessons. Are we going to still offer the other things that we had been offering, other than swim lessons?
We're working on Innovative taking that over. There are therapy pools that they have at 93 degrees. That's another limiting factor, is we, really, the only time that those classes ever ran was in the summer, when seniors could park up close. The water temperature wasn't as frigid to them, because it's hot outside. So Innovative would look to take that over, and they could actually then be able to run the classes at 93 degrees, there's parking up front. And they would take those classes over from us.
And not, and the price would be similar?
Correct.
And they have capacity?
Oh, yeah.
I think if it's good for our community, that's what we need to do, is what's right for the community.
Is there, is there another swim program in the business parks, some other...
There's SwimTastic's, it's a private, like, swim academy.
Yeah, so...
They don't have the capacity. No, that's a relatively, I've been in there too, and it's a relatively smaller pool.
Oh, okay.
They do lessons and stuff like that, a lot with small kids.
Okay, all right.
Will you still have high school kids or other people who are working as lifeguards? Will you have, like, at the pool as it is now? Will you still offer, like, open swim time for people to just come and swim laps or something after that?
We would have to look into, would we have the staff to do that? Right now, the hiring of a lifeguard, what we would look to do potentially, if we were going to do some kind of a Saturday, like, we used to do family flick and floats, where you could come in and watch the movie and stuff like that. We would try and use the lifeguards that the athletic team uses for their swim meets, and do it that way with them. We probably would not have the capacity to hire our own lifeguards for, you know, once here, once there, because they wouldn't stay with us. There's such a shortage of lifeguards right now, that without consistent hours, they're not going to come back. So if we were able to tap into the athletics lifeguards that they utilize, that would be something that we could look at for open swims and doing things.
Yeah, I think when we talk about public-private partnerships, this is almost perfect, because we're filling a need in the community, still keeping the rec program pricing, and it's going to help us avoid a fiscal loss.
Correct. And it could be, bring possibly additional business to a local business, you know? So it's a win-win.
Well, thank you for your feedback, much appreciated. So, Mr. Anderson, you can move forward with the rec guide and doing that work with Innovative. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Item E, Wasbe State Convention Reports. Would any of the board members like to comment about highlights of the convention?
Sure. Okay. I guess I'll start. I mean, it was different. It was virtual. It was interesting that typically in January, I've gone to a number of these. It's always the worst weather of the year, like this kind of weather. This year, it was quite beautiful, so I didn't have to leave my house, but it was... I thought that the format was, the keynote speakers were definitely kind of not as spectacular as they were in the past. Other differences were, you know, there's no exhibit hall to go through, so no stuff to pick up. I did miss the student performances. They usually have really, really excellent student groups performing also at the bigger sessions. So that was different. Another technology thing is they had these, like, speed networking, where you, a session where you just kind of popped on your screen, or you're in front of your screen, and somebody would pop up. I'm not sure how they picked the person. It's a way to meet and talk to people at the convention. You had like three minutes to have a conversation, then they disappear, and then somebody else would show up. I did a couple of those, and I did meet the consultant that we had last time. He was, he was one of the people on there. At first, I thought, oh, well, it's going to be all consultants and people like that. But there are other, there were other district people that, that did show up. So that was interesting. One district was in Arcadia, which is, you know, kind of north, like, the La Crosse area. A smaller district, it was a superintendent, and that's where the furniture store is, the big furniture store. I have it. Yes, is there. So I didn't know that, you know? And clearly, they were going to go in person, because their employer needed, you know, kids at school. So that was kind of a factor in their decision-making. So it was nice to check in with people around the state. You have my report on the different sections that I went to. Other notable ones, I think, I'll say is, one that surprised me was, I did go to a session on the American Indian Studies, which I thought that's going to be just kind of a filler, but the guy was outstanding and made you really think about, you know, American Indians and their history, and more importantly, you know, what, how do they fit in today? What is their contemporary existence like? You know, what, I always think of American Indians as more of the past and historical perspective, but they are, they're a group that's, it's there, and, you know, another cultural group that we need to recognize. And we have an Indian school right here in our, in our community, and I know nothing really about it. It just kind of sits there by itself. So that was kind of a surprise session that I went to. Also, there was a session, and I think a lot of districts are looking forward to COVID being over, and what did we learn, and what are we going to keep with us? So that was kind of a positive. You would think that it's always about how bad it was and how we didn't do it, but it was actually quite positive. Some districts, like the NINA district, did kind of maybe think about, they were using, they seem to be far ahead in terms of how they were implementing technology before this even happened. So, because they already had digital snow days in the past, it wasn't new to them. So they were already training their teachers and coaching their teachers to use technology in a different way. But they did mention that their learning management system was key in how they are able to transform some of that technology to make it more impactful. I'm not sure what we use for our management learning system, I think we have one. I'd be interested in learning about that. And usually, the CSAs also have some really innovative ideas. The last session I went to was an open skills network for a comprehensive learner record. This was in CSA 1, which is our area, right? And the idea is to create this learner record that crosses all different learning opportunities, not just what you learn in school, but maybe in the community, so that you come out with a profile of skills that you have, and you could take that with you after school. So those are some of the other ideas that I came across with the convention, so I'll pass.
Thank you, that was good.
I thought it was really interesting. Obviously, it was my first convention, so to experience it in the virtual format, I don't, I didn't miss all the things that you missed, because I wasn't aware of it. I also wasn't brave enough to try a speed networking thing that you tried. I stuck with just the basic conventions. But I, I did find it really interesting, it was a lot of things to learn. Especially, again, as a new board member, I just, I felt like I could do eight different things a day, and there are only like four slots. So I do appreciate that because it was virtual, they have all those sessions that were all recorded, and I can go back. And so I've been trying to find the ones I didn't get to during the day of the convention to go and kind of keep, keep on with that learning. All my reports are there, I think I overdid it on the report, so you guys can see it.
I also wanted to say, this was their 100 years, this organization, you know, and then have to do this, you know? They did have a really, I think, a pretty neat video, do you remember?
Yeah, the video, looking back at 100 years of the school convention was really...
Like, they had pictures, some, one of the members had gone back and had pictures, that he knew this person, you know, they were a teacher, and they were the bus driver, and it was interesting. I wonder if they could make that available to people, kind of watch that?
But it was really interesting to see just that progression of public education from, you know, one-room schoolhouses, whatever, to the, one of the sessions was, you know, Classroom of the Future, which looked a lot like our middle school. But just that dynamic change of, you know, dirt roads and one-room schoolhouses to super great technology now, so. One of the sessions I went to that was interesting was about community linkages. I think, Mike, you were in that one too, were you? I don't remember Linda, if you were. It was just an interesting way to bring the community together and increase your community engagement. And it was just, it was the Howard Swamaco up by Green Bay, and their approach at having very, a very planned-out, very organized way of connecting with very specific groups in the community on a regular basis to get their feedback, and not only, you know, to share what the board is doing and how that impacts the different community groups, but also then what do those community groups and different constituents need from the board or want from the board? It was a really, it was just kind of interesting. Do you want to say more about that?
Yeah, I, I was, I was watching, and I thought it was really interesting as well. Then I noticed that Ann was there, so we started texting each other, saying how great it was, and...
See, we would have gotten in trouble if we were trying to talk at the convention, but...
It's true, we text each other. It just shows how communication, especially with the community, especially when the community is already engaged, as they are right now. And it promotes what, two-way communication, which I think is really important. You know, it struck me when Dr. Mulberry and Dr. Fockler were here, that it's sort of, it's sort of like a rounding relationship that they have with these groups. So I think that's one to check out.
Well, and that's just your typical, you know, we're going to talk to the staff, we're going to talk to the students, we're going to talk to parents, but we're going to talk to church leaders, and we're going to talk to the local YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club, or the legislative, the business leaders. And just how can we better prepare students to live in this global world?
And how can we better serve the community?
Yeah, and how can we partner with the groups that are... So it was, it was, it was an interesting session.
I noticed a lot of the same things that these two did in terms of the format this year. Donald Driver was the keynote speaker on the first day. And in person, he is, he jumps off the page at you. I mean, he is unbelievably charismatic, and it does not, it's not the same watching him on a Zoom call. It's just not the same. And it's a shame, because he's fantastic, but it just is not the same. I didn't really miss the Expo Center. I have plenty of pens. But, but I do like that you could see, you could go from one to the other, one session to the other, and if a session is not what you thought it was...
Check out.
You can, you can leave immediately and go to a different one. And you can watch, I think I've, I've watched parts, or most, of 15, 15 different sessions. And I think there's 80 of them. So there's plenty to see. I really, the linkage one, I thought was important. There's also, there's also one by Cedarburg about creating a long-term master plan for facilities that you can use, which Linda and I were both at. But a lot of, a lot of interesting things to learn.
I also attended, but what I discovered is, I need to leave the district to go to a conference, because it's very hard not to check your email and be distracted. So I did hear a few, I did participate in a few of the sessions. One that I really thought was important was the school safety session of Department of Justice and the Office of School Safety, focusing on reunification. And just learned that if we had a crisis of some sort, they would be here. So I really wasn't aware that they dispatch or bring out people to support you. So that was really good. And I was also very interested in their statewide tip app, that's called Speak Up. So that was informative. The other one was called Up the Crick Without a Paddle, which is about stress and the kinds of stress, both good and bad. And don't stop believing, loneliness and leadership. So you kind of knew where my head was, I had a little bit. I think the theme of the convention was equity, of course, but what I wrote down here was disruption is an opportunity to innovate. So that was really a theme that came out of the convention, and I think a theme that's coming out of COVID, that we need to embrace, so. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you. Item F, Board Clerk's Report, Ms. Larson.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that a primary election is to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, February 16, 2021, for the offices of school board member. Based on the results of this primary election, six candidates will be placed on the general election ballot. The general election is to be held on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Three school board seats will be filled for a three-year term, beginning on Monday, April 26, 2021. The ballot positions for the primary, primary election are as follows. Position number one, Maxud Khan. Position number two, Anne Sapersky. Position number three, Shu Chi Wadwa. Position number four, Jeffrey P. Hall. Position number five, Angela Christie. Position number six, Claude W. Lewis. And position number seven, Angela Beer. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Item nine, School Board Liaison Reports.
I will, oh, you want to go first?
Go ahead.
I did attend the SWSA meeting, I think it was this week, and we had Children's Hospital again report. And they talked about the vaccine being available, or how it was going to be, become available. And they also said that, I think, they had about 95% of direct healthcare staff were getting the vaccine, but about 65% of, you know, secondary health workers were not really too keen about getting the vaccine. And they kind of are, they surveyed some of the reasons that they said, and then they gave some counterfacts to kind of help, you know, make sure that we are embracing this vaccine, I guess. And she was going to share, I think, those points, those talking points. So I think I'll, you have those, Judy, right? I don't know what we're, I don't know what you're seeing as far as acceptance of the vaccine.
It was very, very interesting. Dr. Kari from Children's Hospital spoke to this, and perhaps you know who that is, but... Yeah, the, she, she went through what, you know, some of the myths might be about the vaccine. And one of the things she addressed that I found very interesting was, you know, people talk about it was produced too quickly. And she said that, you know, the technology isn't new, that the technology is there. And because there's a global concern, there were a lot of resources put into this. And because of the widespread virus, they were able to do a lot of trials very quickly. So all of that was a little bit new information to me, and I thought very helpful. So that was one of the myths. Let's see if I can just share a couple more real quick. Let's see. She indicated that there's no evidence that the vaccine impacts a person's DNA.
Yeah, that was another one.
Yeah. And it does not, is not made from fetal tissue, which is another thing that people might be saying. There have been over 40 million doses in the US, is what she reported, and 0.05%, only 0.05% of those receiving the vaccine have had serious side effects. So hearing from the medical professionals, some of this information is always very helpful. So that's what you're referring to.
And no microchips are part of the vaccine, so you can't track anybody. No microchips are part of the vaccine, so you can't...
I heard that too.
These are all things that they've heard. And then the second part of the meeting was, we had legislators from one side of the aisle talk about how they see the budget shaping up. So, and the concern, as I mentioned before, is that, you know, districts, well, the perception is that teachers aren't working as hard, they're not in school, there's, you know, there's all this federal dollars out there. So we have to kind of get the story out there. So there is, the group has put together like nine key questions, and also there's a template of information that they're trying to gather so that the, they can present, you know, solid information to the legislature before things get rolling. And I'll share the slide deck, so you can kind of watch for that. I don't know, Jim, have you been part of that? But Wasvo has been doing monthly meetings on topics to kind of get set for that discussion. And the perception also seems to be that the state is in a good position as far as their year-end results, so they have money, but how are we going to spend it? You know, that's always, you know, what's going to happen, you know? The posturing that goes on, it's, it's interesting discussion when you listen to them talk. And notes are taken, so you can, again, I can share that with you. Also... And notes are taken, so you can, again, I can share that with you. Also, what else can I say about that? I think, I think the governor, even in the convention, we have the governor always comes the last day. His priorities have been, you know, broadband and mental health in the schools, and the third one. I don't have it right here. So, and the budget was successful last year because of the special ed change in the percentage. And that is something that, that people, you know, they, they listen to that. You know, they really think that special ed should be funded much greater than it is now. It's only, it's not even 30%, and it's supposed to be at 60. So that's a factor that might be successful in the next budget round. So that's all I have to say. Read the, flip through the slide deck when you, when you get it, and you'll feel more informed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep. I had my meeting with Doctors Reuter and Cohen for curriculum and assessment, just talking about how we did the mid-year maps, as students took their map testing, getting ready for forward testing and the ACT coming up in springtime. And then talked a little bit about the return of our elementary students who came back from virtual to in-person. We were able to do that without any staffing changes or anything that way. And I think that might have been about it. Good meeting. Keeping us up to date.
Thank you.
We were, Ann and Dr. Mueller and I were all at the, the grand opening for the home of the construction class. Fantastic, beautiful home. Was sold late last week, two weeks ago. Anyway, it was sold within the last couple of weeks.
Good.
There was, there was quite a few people there, families, the kids, and community members, I would guess. But, and a large, from O'Brien Home. So it was, it's a beautiful house, and the trades are important. So. So, great job.
Very good. Really need to see how that came from studs in the wall the last time we were there to finish product. That was pretty impressive that our students are doing that work.
I was there for the earlier one. It was impressive what they were putting together. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it for that one. Anyone else?
Did we meet our legislators at that meeting?
They got postponed.
Oh, did. Okay.
Next week.
And the next item is School and Community Engagement Reports. Does anyone have one? Okay. Item 10, School Board Meeting Debriefing. Does any school board member have comments? Hearing none. Item 11, Future Agenda Items, Board Liaison Role Discussion, Principal Action Plan Update for Franklin High School, Academic Excellent Scholarship Recipient Approvals, Technical Excellent Scholarship Recipient Approvals, Early College Credit and College Start Now Request Approvals, Franklin Public Schools Equity Non-Negotiables, and our Budget Document Revisions Review. Item 12, Adfirmment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Kowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned at 7:13.